All right, six blocks of the North. And we want to thank the schools to educate, inspire, and support all students. Please all stand in front of the witness.
My pleasure, please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tanya, do you have our statement of commitment, please?
Policy one point seven, the board acts in a judicial review capacity to resolve conflicts and administer justice.
Thank you. Public participation process, members of the audience are welcome to make comments at the time designated on the agenda. Please register on the signup sheet and limit your comments to three minutes when your name is called. Out of respect for all individuals, please refrain from personal criticism in an open forum. Policy one point, one seven, one six, seven point three. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support?
Motion by Pam, support by Anna. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, the motion pass. Then I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Anna, support by Brandon. Any questions on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, the motion pass. Educational highlights, Dr. Cooper.
Yeah, today we're going to get a presentation from our curriculum director Beth Voss and our MTSS coordinator Andrew Jacobic. And they're going to talk to us a little bit about the support system that we have in place for our students. And I am not going to try to steal any of their thunder, so I'm just going to turn it right over to them.
Yeah, so as Dr. Cooper said, we're going to just provide an update on our MTSS goal. That's our five-year district goal. We're right in the middle of year three. And we are working with Project Aware from the Ottawa ISD to build a strong and sustainable MTSS framework across our district. So we are just going to go through some of the progress that we've made so far and some of our next steps. So first of all, just because, I mean, some of you I know have seen this before, but for those of you who are new and maybe haven't seen this visual, this is the MTSS pinwheel, we call it. MTSS consists of five main components, so you see those components there. It's a tiered delivery system, so delivering our instruction. Tier one for all students, tier two for typically around twenty percent or so of students who need a little extra support, and then tier three, about five percent of students needing an additional layer of support. Another tier, another component is having team-based leadership in place. So Andrew's going to talk in just a minute about some of the teams that we have in place across the district. Continuous data-based decision-making, along with that next one, comprehensive screening and assessment, is all around how we, what assessments we have in place and how we use those to make informed decisions. And we'll be talking a bit about that as we go along. And then finally, the last component is around how do we select new instructional materials? And then also, how do we implement those effectively and with fidelity once they're selected? So our goal over the next, over five years total, is to develop this strong MTSS system. And each year, we'll continue to assess how that goal is coming and put in place some next steps. Once it is fully in place, we'll have a system that's efficient and sustainable and can help educators provide students with supports to be successful. So one other, just piece of background knowledge before we get deeper into it, is this is another important visual that we reference frequently throughout our, any of our goal work. This is the continuous improvement cycle. So we really work through this cycle continuously. But basically, it shows there that we begin by assessing the needs across the district. So with related to this goal, we assess our needs within our MTSS framework. And then usually during our fall data review meetings, every building and our district level teams do a fall data review meeting. And that's when we put our action, you know, we decide on what action steps we're going to put in place to meet, reach those goals. And then we have the implementation stage. That's just ongoing all year, different, you know, grade levels, departments, groups across the district all have responsibilities for implementing those action steps. And then in the middle of the year, we have a winter data review. And that is all of our building teams, our grade level department teams, our district teams. That is to monitor the progress, so we see what have we done so far? How is it going? What might need adjustments? And then finally, the evaluation stage. Towards the end of the year, at our spring data review meetings, have we met those goals? Were there any barriers? Do we need to make any adjustments? And what, and then we begin to set our goals for next year.
So I want to take some time just to kind of review the different teams that we've created within this MTSS process. One of those areas, the team-based leadership, is really important in just how we navigate when barriers and things do come up. And so we have two sort of district level, level teams. One of those is our district improvement team. This is really comprised of all of our department heads, our grade level heads. We have some parent representation on that, we've got some school board representation on that. So that's really where we're monitoring and looking at the progress that we're making on all of our district level goals. The next one that you see up there is a little bit different in that it's our district coordinated supports team. So that group meets monthly, whereas that district improvement team, I think, meets three to four times a year, depending on the year. But that district coordinated supports team meets monthly to really continue to look at what support all the other teams need and to just monitor and create processes that we might need at the, at the district level or at the building level. So when things kind of surface with our building teams, that gets lifted up to our district coordinated supports team, and we're able to problem solve and then make adjustments there. So those next ones that you see on there are the building leadership teams. We have two sort of current building leadership teams now, school leadership teams, which really look at that tier one that Beth was talking about within the tiered system. So that school leadership team is going to look at all of our school level data around behavior data, academic data. And they're going to use that data to just make adjustments to how we approach things at the, at the, at the building level. That team is comprised of teachers, social workers, parents. So we really try to get a well-rounded team there so that when we do need to make adjustments at the school level, it's not just admin, admin are a huge part of it, but it's not just coming from admin, it's also coming from teachers' peers or staff peers. That next one is something that we will talk a little bit more about later on in our review, but that's our advanced tiers team. That's pretty new to Allendale. We started that work towards the end of the 23-24 school year, but really hit it hard last school year and the 24-25 school year. Advanced tiers are really going to look at tier two and tier three. So that team is a little bit smaller than our school leadership team and really is comprised of admin and our intervention teams, so both our academic and our behavior intervention teams. And they're really looking at more of those smaller student groups based on some specific data and what we might call red flag criteria that each building is going to look at and review on a bi-weekly, you know, basis. The next one are our grade level and our department levels. And so grade level really references our elementary levels where we have individual grades. Department level really is for those departments, like arts might be one of those. But really, as secondary, we have our English departments, our social studies teams. They're going to meet monthly and just again, similar to the school leadership teams, they're going to review goals, make sure they're making some of those tweaks and things as they need to. I think that covers teams. This next slide is just some of the assessments that we use to just kind of gauge how we are doing. There are also some fidelity inventories, they're kind of a mix of the school climate surveys. So we really try to have a robust assessment system so that we get different views on, on all of our, you know, data. So that district capacity assessment is a tool that our district coordinated support team is going to use. It really helps us know if we're aligned with best practices. It helps us know sort of where we are within the overall system. And so this actually presentation is a great example of how out of that district capacity assessment we realize best practice really is to present our school-wide data at least twice, twice a year. So those are things that we'll continue to do based off that, you know, district capacity assessment. The other ones are similar in that their fidelity inventory is really meant to help us just understand how our systems are, you know, working. And then, of course, we have things like our eye-ready benchmark assessments, which are really valuable in helping our teachers sort of know which students need more targeted intervention or which students we can kind of continue to support with some of our tier one instruction things. High school has similar ones, they're just not using the eye-ready benchmark.
Thank you. So what we're going to do next is go through some of the results of these assessments that we gave. Already a few months ago, I think back in June, I went over a lot of the academic data with you. So that would be more of our eye-ready and high school assessments. In this presentation, then we're going to focus more on some of those system-level assessments to see how our systems are in place. Some of our school climate surveys, some of our behavior data. So we thought it would be good for you to have kind of an overview of what those assessments are. And then we'll go through and talk about some of those results and goals for next year based on those results. So the district capacity assessment, that measures like just our district's implementation of MTSS. And it gives, there's actually twenty-seven items on that. And it's like a rubric, you score each one as a zero, one, or a two based on the descriptors for each of those point values. It's very clear, you know, what, everything you have to have in place to have a two, you have to have all of these things in place. So we go through those twenty-seven items, the team scores it. So this shows our scores over time. We take, we do this assessment once a year, typically in the spring. And so you can see from when we began to now, the growth that we have shown now at eighty-five percent, which is really, the goal is to be able to score at least an eighty percent on that district capacity assessment in order to have a real impactful system. So we were really proud to reach that eighty-five percent. We still did pick up a few next steps that we can implement to try to even boost those scores even higher next year. And we want to make sure, one of the things that we need to have a more clear plan around is how do we ensure that all of our staff, you know, our teachers, our aides, people on the bus, cafeteria workers, playground monitors, how do we ensure that all of them are trained in the PBIS components that pertain to them? And when we get new staff that are on-boarded, how do we get them up to speed with that training? So that'll be something that the district team works on this year. And then also, another goal we set for ourselves is to just be able to continue to strengthen that communication system and developing like a consistent and an efficient way for staff and teams to lift barriers that they might be having to our district level or building level teams. And then how do we ensure that we are responding timely and efficiently to those barriers?
All right, this next slide that we're going to look at really starts to come around some of the advanced tier system work that we did in the last year. So you'll see that start up, there says major twenty-four, twenty-five focus. Advanced tiers was something that we started in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, but really hit last year at each one of our, you know, individual buildings. And so we really partnered with Project Aware to just understand what we needed to have in place to have a really solid advanced tier system in, 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 in place. So what you're going to see at the bottom on those, on those charts is when we started this work, we did what they, again, we did the TFI, the tiered fidelity inventory, just to kind of understand where we are currently and then where we would like to be. We also did the reading TFI, so there's two TFIs in there. One's around your PBIS system and one's around your reading intervention systems. We were pretty solid in our reading to start with, but we were able to get our district up to eighty per, per, percent with those advanced tier teams and just kind of understanding some of those small tweaks that we, that we could make. Our PBIS system really comes around more of our behavioral work that we have to do. And that's one where I think, you know, as a district, we've really been focused on those academic pieces. And we're just starting to formulate at the advanced tier level outside of tier one, some of those more behavioral systems that we need to have in place. So from a behavioral end, we've had a lot of things in place, they have not been coordinated, right? We, we've kind of been figuring out what each student needs, but it hasn't been in the most efficient way that it, that it could be. So within that advanced tiers work, we're really going to formalize, how do we start looking at student data? How do we make decisions around what intervention to put in place for a student? And then also, what team is looking at that? So the hope with that is to continue to formalize that, that process and a long way to make some of that work easier on teachers, to make our communication with teachers and families better. Because sometimes there's just some, some gaps within, within that. And so we're hoping that that behavioral PBIS piece will just continue to grow throughout, throughout this year. And really using the great work that we're doing on the reading or the academic, and we keep saying reading. There's not a math TFI, but our math interventions are very similar. We use the, the same system for all of our academic interventions. Our academic advanced tiers is really solid, and we're using that to model our behavioral pieces off of. A quick note, that's a pretty new process for any district. Allendale is one of the only districts in the state of Michigan that's integrating advanced tiers at the same time. So our advanced tiers teams are integrated, meaning we have both behavioral staff sitting on a team and we have academic staff sitting on a team. So we're looking at a student from that whole child view, so not just if they're struggling academically, but then we're also considering other behavioral or, you know, some of those emotional wellbeing things that we need to also take into consideration when looking at some of those test scores. So that's a really new process. We, again, are one of the only districts in the state to be doing that. And so there's really exciting work in that, but it's sort of like learning multiple languages at one time. We're sort of taking it all in and figuring it out. So that's some of our information on the advanced tiers team. Again, I think this year will, will really start the year in a stronger place with that than where we were last year.
Okay. Another one of the assessments that we use are, are, are surveys. And so we give surveys to families, we give surveys to students and to staff. And so this slide just summarizes that school climate survey that we gave last spring. This is the family one. So what you see here is we, you know, there were several questions, but each, the questions all fell into these six categories. Institutional environment is the first one. School safety is the second category. Interpersonal relationships, teaching and learning, parent involvement, and accessing assistance. So there were several questions underneath each of those categories, and we found like the average score for each of the buildings. So each one of those colored bars represents-
Parent survey, we also get feed, feedback from staff. The categories are similar but slightly different. We have physical and environment, school safety, peer and adult relations, structure for learning, parental involvement, staff connections, and accessing assistance. So again, similar to the, to the last one of four, as always, we're strongly agree. Three is often agree, two is sometimes disagree, and one is never strongly disagree. So you can see a little bit of a difference between how families who respond to the survey perceive that versus, versus, versus staff. And again, this information is really used for buildings to look at and to start making some, some adjustments.
The final survey that we give is to our students, and we do this from third grade and up. It's a little difficult to get the K-two students to take a Google survey, so we start this at third grade. So when you see evergreen there, just keep in mind that is just the third graders in that building. But yeah, this one had a few categories as well. We asked questions that got towards their attitudes towards school. Clear rules for behavior, peer relationships and respect, belonging and connectedness, and acknowledgement of positive behavior. So, you know, the one that came out the, the highest overall was that clear rules for behavior. And that was good to see because that's really what we have been focusing, focusing on with our tier one PBIS is having those consistent expectations across the school and in classrooms. So students are really clear on what the expected behaviors are, so it was good to see that one higher. Some of the ones that, you know, attitude, peer relationships and respect, belonging and connectedness. We expect those scores to improve now that we will be fully implementing our restorative practices. This past year, all of our staff were trained in that. That is, restorative practices includes kind of activities and strategies for teachers to use in the classroom at all grade levels to really build community and build those connections with each other. So using, last year we were trained in it. Our secondary staff wasn't trained in it until the end of the year. So this will really be the implementation year, and that is really intended to build that community and that belonging for students. So we're hopeful that after a year of that, those scores will improve. And then a lot of our, a lot of our buildings looked at some of their scores around that last category, acknowledgement of positive behavior, and identified that, okay, we have the clear rules for behavior. Students understand those rules, and now we want to really focus on recognizing those positive behaviors. So you'll see that some buildings have selected that acknowledgement system to continue to build on next year.
All right, this next slide is just another visual representation of sort of how our discipline data breaks, breaks, breaks down. So we use a program called Swiss Data. Swiss was, Swiss is a national data system that we can put our building behavior data into. And that kind of helps us understand where are we both within our tiered system. So what you'll see there is the green represents sort of tier, tier one. Those are all of our students who either had zero or one behavior incident throughout the school year. The yellow are those students who had two to five behavior incidents throughout the school year. And then red are those students that had six or more behavior incidents throughout the school year. Ideally, what we want to see here is eighty, at least eighty percent within that green, about fifteen or twenty percent within the yellow, and five percent within, within the red. So this is data that each building is looking at every, every single month to make some adjustments within how they're approaching students, how we're teaching expectations. And then again, just things that we need to look at or tweak on the building level.
All right, and then based on all of this data, the buildings set goals for, well, they first celebrate some of the things in the data and then set goals. So we're not going to read through all of these celebrations and goals, but maybe we just highlight a couple from each building. So the ECC, one of the celebrations was that one hundred percent of the staff indicated that they feel supported at the ECC. And ninety-seven percent of families reported that they know how to access help at the ECC. Also, ninety percent of the students knew the school expectations and acknowledged that they had received acknowledgement in the last two weeks. So those were great celebrations. And goals for twenty-five, twenty-six, you know, we have our academic goal there around vocabulary, which we went over in June. But their goal around behaviors is that they want to improve how they're documenting, like the motivation of a student's behavior. So one of the things they noticed in their behavior data, one of the questions that are asked on the behavioral referral form is, you know, what was the student's motivation for their behavior? Sometimes, you know, it might be peer attention or adult attention, or maybe it's work avoidance. But one of the top responses was, I don't know. So it's not really helpful when we're getting responses like, don't know. So we want to do some better training about how staff can try to identify what's motivating that behavior. Because if we can identify what's motivating it, we can be better about preventing it in the first place. And then in evergreen, one hundred percent of students could give an example of what it means to follow the three Rs around school. So they understand those expectations well. And then we had a big growth in the number of parents who were involved in, in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So it went from sixty-six percent the previous year to eighty-eight percent of parents reporting being involved in school. I think evergreen was really intentional about making events that, such as they, they started doing munch and mingle where parents could come during the lunch hour and have lunch with their student, and that really boosted the parent involvement. So we were happy to see that. And then their goals around the behaviors for next year would be to increase the amount of students who report that they feel that they belong at school. And again, our restorative practices should help with that. And then also, thinking about the questions on the student and staff survey around classroom behaviors getting in the way of teachers being able to teach. They set goals for fifty percent fewer of students reporting that and twenty-five percent fewer of staff reporting that. At Oakwood, like evergreen, one hundred percent of the students knew those expectations and could give an example of how that looked across different settings. Ninety-two percent of families reported that the school communicates well with families, so that was positive. And their goal related to behaviors was, again, also around belonging. They want to increase the percentage of students who say that they often or always belong. So restorative practices will be the method that we do that. And then also decreasing the number of physical aggression referrals by three percent. So just a quick note about physical aggression. It sounds a little more harsh than often it is. Physical aggression includes, the majority of physical aggression referrals are things on the playground just getting a bit too rough. Happens a lot on the soccer field or, you know, there ends up being some, maybe some shoving. But sometimes we see physical aggression and think that's a all-out fistfight. But really, this is just, majority of the time, it's just play that got too rough. But still, we want to decrease that, and so their goal is to decrease that by at least three percent.
All right, I'll go over the secondary data sets real, real quick here. So for middle school, some of the things that we really were excited about at the end of the year was that forty percent decrease in tardies from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That's a really good example of how middle school was really targeting that this last school, school year based on the data that they had from before. We did a lot of encouraging things with students to make sure that they were, were recognized for being on time. And then also just a lot of practice with them. And really clarity too, just around what does it mean to be tardy? As we surveyed staff, we found out that some staff, it's like we have to have two feet solidly in the classroom when that bell rings, sort of like football rules for in. And then some staff was like, you have to be in your desk, ready, ready, ready to go. So there was some work there to clean it up, and they saw a really good decrease in the amount of tardies. The other piece that we were pretty excited about was eighty-seven percent of students reported that school rules are clear as measured by the PBIS system and, or, I'm sorry, measured by the school climate survey. So again, if anybody's been in a middle school, middle schoolers sometimes struggle to know what those expectations are. So we, we felt like that, that was some really solid, solid work. On the other side of that, as we did our TFI walkthroughs, it became really clear that students didn't always know when they were being recognized or the way that staff were recognizing them or acknowledging them was not in a meaningful way. And so that's one of our goals this upcoming school year is to see a, a difference in that, in that piece. So we'll move on to our high school data. For high school, I think one of the really exciting things for our high school team this year is- um, each year our on buildings will look at the top three behaviors that they have throughout the entire school year. For high school this year, um, all their top three behaviors were all what we would call staff-supported be- be- behaviors, which really means that teachers are managing those in the classroom or they're not ask, they're they're not so big that they're escalating further. That's really exciting for a couple of reasons. I think the biggest reason is that that really means that we have staff who really understand their students. They understand how to respond to them. That comes back to a lot of the training that we've done in the last couple of years around the PBIS classroom, around the restorative practices. And that staff have the tools that they need to support students in the in the classroom. There's a lot of research that kind of comes alongside that idea of when we have students um who are leaving the classroom for whatever reason, that that they're just not getting their academic information, right? And so we really want to keep all all as many kids in the classroom as we can. So to have the top three behaviors at school being supported in the in the classroom is just a really exciting um stat to look at. The other really exciting thing for high school is that their national average of behavior referrals per day was below the national average. So that's the other nice thing about Swiss is we can kind of compare our buildings to other other schools nationally. Our other schools were really close to that. We were slightly higher in our in our in our other buildings. Um, but our 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 high school was was pretty solidly below that with three point three behaviors referrals per day um versus the average of three point seven five for high school. So that was really, really exciting. Um, and I think just a good example of how that team has worked really hard each month to look at their data and then get information back to staff to make all of those minor tweaks so that we can keep keep kids in in the classroom. They also came up with some with some goals. Um, their goals are a little bit more lengthy, so I'm just going to read that top one. Um, but by spring of twenty twenty-six, eighty percent of staff will be able to list um school-wide expectations and give an example of how they are taught and monitored as part of classroom instruction. And seventy percent of staff will report consistent and equitable responses contextually inappropriate behavior. And we will measure the consistent and equitable implementation of classroom PBIS practices by almost all staff or greater than eighty percent. So that's one of the questions that comes out of the TFI walkthrough. Um, and again, I think it's just a, that's an example of where we're just challenging our staff in some new and different and different ways. And so um, I think that's a really obtainable goal for our high school team and um something we're excited to kind of get after this year. And we've got one more. Sorry, I'm going to try to speed speed this up. Um, so this is our district data re- review summary. So just like our buildings, our district coordination support team also did our 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 district re- review. That first celebration, we've already kind of hit on. We were um an eighty-five percent on the district capacity assessment, which is really exciting because again, I think that that trickles down to our buildings. It helps us have those systems in place to really um monitor things and make and make those uh adjustments throughout the year. And then again, that advanced tier system, growth is getting those teams in place, getting them some ground to start moving on was really um was was really a big lift in the in the last year. Um, some district level goals that we're going to continue working on is um just maintaining that eighty percent for that eighty percent fidelity across uh across the board. All of our buildings met their fidelity goals within the TFIs and some of the other trackers that we use. We want to continue that. And we want to try to increase by at least a ten percent in the next year. Some of those will be really tricky, right? Once you already hit that eighty-five percent to go to ninety-five percent is, I mean, that's a pretty big lift. So we'll 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 just monitor that. Um, but that's that's really probably the biggest one on the district level.
And that's it. Do you have any questions for us?
It's a lot of information to get thrown at you.
It was a a great presentation with a lot of really good information. So I was glad to hear that, you know, you're doing the check, do, act kind of process and and looking at it and looking for opportunities to improve, you know, mid-year in the winter with that review. So a lot of a lot of good information there.
I don't have any questions, but I can appreciate how hard it is to have objective data for humans and especially like kids. Um, so I know that's really tough. So I want to say great job because like I know you talked to us about SMART goals and like I use in my work too, but they were all over the place. They're reasonable. Um, I really like all of that, being able to compare ourselves to national average and see where we're at for all that. So it was great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
One question I have for you, Dr. Cooper. The Project Aware, that was a grant that we were, that we received, right?
It's a program through the ISD and so um they approached districts to see if there's an interest. And I think we might be the only one in Ottawa County or is it?
For the first half of the start, now there are a couple more districts.
Okay.
Maybe three more now in that.
They've come on board.
I joined there maybe a year or two behind us.
Yep, so it's through the ISD and there's a lot of ISD support for that program.
Okay, the research that I did on it, it seemed like it was really um sort of um pointed toward mel- mental health and services. Was there any academic component to it? Or did we develop that using the infrastructure that was laid out? I mean, it's a great idea. I love that you guys are using that that tiered structure in every building. You've got sort of that hierarchy.
About why the language in the grant is so mental health um heavy is because it's through the SAMPSA grant funds. So SAMPSA has to be connected to some of that mental health language. So the in that they do provide some guidances, you saw, right, like using the TFIs and how to attract different things at our, through our advanced tier teams. Those are the behavioral sort of mental health end of, end of, end of things. With that, that's that integrated piece that we are doing. So we're pulling along our academic pieces with that. So the RTFI came through that Project Aware team. So looking at our reading um systems, how we are doing there and then making making some of those tweaks. So while that grant language is more of a mental health engine kind of um go along with SAMPSA, um, it definitely is an integrated process.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful because that's what I looked at, the um SAMPSA, the sus- substance abuse, mental health services administration. So I didn't know if if we took the infrastructure that the grant allowed us to sort of uh develop and then we were using that for sort of academic benchmarking, the, you know, the continuous improvement process. Or if we were looking at targeting or working with students on mental health, what impact, positive impact that is having on academics, which obviously it's going to.
Yeah, it's a both end there, right? We're we're doing both of those things. We're building that infrastructure that allows us to make some of those um embrances around how are the behaviors impacting academics or sometimes vice versa, right, where we have students who are academically behind and then they're frustrated in class. And it's really, it's not so much a mental health thing as it is we actually kind of pick them up here. So it's sort of a both, of both ended in that way.
Right. No, it's good. It was, it's a good presentation, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your hard work. We appreciate it. Um, I'm the public comment. Uh, Ronnie Allen.
I apologize for my phone going off. Um, maybe we need a, I forget what the kids are using now at the in the classrooms, but a phone. I actually was trying to push, turn off a push notification and I don't know where that came from, but anyway. I was trying to get my daughter to come in, but she didn't want to. So um, because she just, I don't know if you know her, but she's kind of all up and down. So the up was mom. She just loves her teachers and she just had rave reviews about her day and her teachers and um, so I just wanted to say that. It I, it's a good start to a a a year, I would say. I mean, there's always the down after the ups, but you know. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Corey Mango.
Hello, um, I wasn't planning on talking about it, but since the pers- the uh presentation was there, there was a, there was a goal for the high school to have eighty percent of the teachers know the goal by the end of the year as a celebration. Um, as as those goals go, um, I think that should be a hundred percent. I think all your teachers need to know the goal. That that should be the standard. Um, and s- and still celebrate eighty, celebrate when they when they get there, but hundred percent, it's all of our teachers should know whatever that goal was. So I'll just throw that in there. I also want to talk about the the structure that you have there. Um, Coach Bros on the football team, I I coach on the football team. He has implemented that on the football team. He has seven, what he calls battalions. And those battalions, he has a leader. Those seven boys came in and they learned how to be leaders and how they were going to conduct their battalion. And the boys got to choose their own battalion names. Um, they chose like superhero type things, so turtles and defenders and all these funny names. But these can, teams consist of a senior who leads it and then they have freshmen. They have all different positions and they chose their own teams one by one. And um, we're seeing very good results with that also. Um, so our, our kids are seeing it. Our, and then they're taking that leadership style that you're implementing here and they're teaching it to each other. And we're teaching freshmen how to be leaders with those seniors. So we're developing within a program and we can squash small problems in a small group. It doesn't fester in a large group and then it's harder to take care of. So the system works and Coach Bros is implementing that. Lastly, um, I want to say thank you. Um, we had a, an improvement to the to the weight room. We got three new weight racks in there. Much needed. That equipment that was replaced was over twenty years old. And um, it looks awesome. It says Falcons on there. And if you haven't been in there for a weightlifting session, um, I ask that you just kind of peek in the windows and take a look at what's going on in there. Our bowlers, our golfers, everybody is mandated to lift if you're in an athletic program. And um, that is a very good improvement um to that. So I say thank you to everyone in this room that that made that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Um, that's the end of the list. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment at this time? If not, we will move on to committee reports. Uh, CM? Nothing. Thank you. Superintendent Report, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it was a great first day of school. Thank you, Ms. Allen, for your comments. That uh, just a lot of really great positive energy. We talked about the Project Aware. I was in Oakwood today and um they were doing their uh PBIS training. So the teachers will take the students down like to the cafeteria and they walk them through what the expectations are. And they took them through the hallway and they said, okay, this is what the expectation is when you go to specials and just a lot of intentionality going on in the district for what our expectations are and how we want kids to behave and how we expect them to treat others and treat adults. And it's just, it's great to see and uh really enjoyed it. So uh, today was a half day. We ease our kids into it. Tomorrow we get serious. It's a full day of school. So hopefully they get some good sleep tonight. So I wanted to talk a little bit about a couple of ideas. One I shared with you is a board resolution on salary increases. Again, this is still part of all that ORS stuff that's going on. The Office of Retirement Services, um, they've given, they've been pushing back when people have been retiring on some of the increases that they've seen. And um, Mr. Vanderlawn was participating in a webinar with a couple of different attorneys who talked about districts considering a resolution that again, may help employees. The biggest pushback that people are getting is if there's a reason for ORS to suspect that there was some spiking done to their salary, which means um a huge increase towards the end of their career uh in uh in our pension fund. It's, your, your pension is based on your best three years of income. And so what districts were quite honestly doing years ago is they would do that. They would, they would intentionally give large bonuses or stipends or big salary increases. And so ORS wants to protect against that. And so one of the ways to do that is to think about a resolution that the board would simply say, we have not given an increase for the purpose of spiking anyone's salary. Um, when I think about where that could come into play for us, because typically our administrators have always gotten the same raise as our teachers' union or less. There've been years it's been less. But we have had some cases where we maybe started someone at a lower salary because they lacked experience and a couple of years later, they're knocking it out of the park. And so you want to keep their salary competitive so you don't lose them. So there might be a bump in uh their wages there. Uh, one of the things uh I wasn't thinking about um and until tonight was we switched our GSRP. Some of our classes went from being four days a week of instruction to five days a week of instruction. And so we gave those teachers um a more significant increase. Now, they were always five days a week before, but they taught four days and they had Fridays for prep and parent meetings and all those things. Well, now by teaching all five days, they don't get as much planning time. They have to schedule those parent meetings outside of their day. And so we gave a little bit larger stipend. And so this helps then explain, um, you know, we can always explain the increases, but ORS, look, we didn't do this just to say, hey, GSRP teachers, we want to make sure you have a good retirement. So that's the point of the resolution. Just for your consideration, I wanted to put it out there. Again, um, you you had it, hopefully you had a chance to read it. Don't know if you had any questions on it. If it's something you'd feel comfortable with, um, that'd be great. So again, this would be something that um unless there's an objection, I would probably make it an action item at the next meeting where we could have the final discussion and then you definitely have to vote on it because it's a resolution, so.
All right, um, is that in your weekly update?
It was in my weekly update, yeah.
I was drawing a blank there. I'm like, wasn't in our attachments. All right.
Well, you just never know because like, um, so we had an employee who teaches for us and then two years ago, we decided we had a need for a middle school AD. And so we put this person on what's called a Schedule B plan and it's like twelve percent of their salary. So ORS might look at it and go, wow, your wages spiked that year. Well, we can easily explain that, but the problem is they're really, they've really been hassling people about it. And so while they might eventually get their money, what ORS is doing is they're delaying pension payments. So people are going months without getting their pension or they have to go through an appeal process to explain, well, that jump was because I went from teaching four days to five days or that jump was because I took on a Schedule B. So that's the point of the resolution is that we can just give that employee, here's a document from our board saying, we didn't give anybody an increase just to spike their retirement. So just another example.
I would like to see that on the next uh meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, all right. Thank you. Um, oops, what did I do with my agenda? Is the, so School Equity Caucus. We have another discussion coming up in a little bit, which made me think about um, you know, the decision not to go with M A S B. And you know me, one of my big things is advocacy. And I I want us to have that voice in Lansing and I want us to have that voice in Washington and just who's out there speaking for us. And at first, it didn't occur to me, but School Equity Caucus is a group that I was involved with back when I was in a smaller district. And what the School Equity Caucus is, is it's a group that was formed back in the late nineteen eighties. And at that time, there was really unequitable funding, inequitable, sorry about that, uh, funding between schools. So a smaller district might get like four thousand dollars per student and a bigger district might get ten thousand dollars per student. I mean, it was crazy, the disparity. And so a group of schools got together, they created the School Equity Caucus, um, they hired somebody to be a lobbyist for them. And so that's what this is. It's a group of about two hundred schools now across the state of Michigan. They're still primarily um smaller districts. I'd say they have a few bigger districts. Those are usually ones that are like maybe a bigger UP district, so they're larger, but they, they're far from Lansing, so they feel they need that voice. Their focus is, so they're purely a lobbyist group. It's not like M A S B. They don't do training or webinar, any of that stuff. Um, they don't do school board stuff or hiring superintendents or any of that. They just focus on lobbying. But they're even more, it's even more microcosm into the fact that they focus on funding. That's the equity piece is the funding piece. So whereas M A S B, for good or for bad, would wage it, you know, on school policy issues, the Equity Caucus is really focused on financials. And so their goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six year are advocate for infrastructure improvement, funding for schools in need. for schools in need. That's again, for a lot of districts, they have trouble getting bonds to pass. Work to minimize competitive grants and categorical funding that create unnecessary inequities. Fight for staffing solutions in shortage areas, again, particularly in some of these smaller rural districts, trying to find somebody to teach Spanish or somebody to, you know, it's really hard to do. So they, they're working on that. They're looking to be innovative in the approach to educating legislators in communities about school funding. Again, that's one of the things we're running into is school funding is hard to understand. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts there. And so they want to think of how can we help people understand and even our legislators, help them understand how funding works. And then they want to protect PK to 12 funding for PK to 12 schools. That's because, as I think I said in my update, they're trying to raid the school aid fund primarily for roads and for higher education. So you can see at the School Equity Caucus, they have a very limited focus on what they do. They're strictly a lobbyist group. I can tell you because they are at those meetings I'm at in Lansing, they do have a seat at the table. Obviously, it's not as prominent as a larger organization like MASP, but they're in the room and our legislators know them. And so if, and I just put this out there because I feel like, you know, I have some information, you should have it too. If you thought you wanted to be involved with a group that would continue to lobby on our behalf, for a school our size, it's $1,000 for the year. So it's a $1,000 cost for the year. So just putting it out there. Don't know if you had any questions, more information. Again, if they have a website, I don't know if you've had a chance to go to it, it's very limited. You don't learn a whole lot. I've been very familiar with the person who's been the lead administrator for them for years. There's been three different ones since I've been a superintendent. They're all former superintendents. The one right now, Brian Keim, was a superintendent over in the Thumb area for a dozen years. So they understand the needs of school districts.
Are any of those 200 schools in our, like in Ottawa County, for instance?
You know, I have to go, no. I didn't get a list. I don't know that there'd be a whole lot in this area because the schools are bigger. I could see like just a little further north, like Muskegon, Oak Ridge, Ravenna. It's that size school that really gets involved. Yeah. You know, it's not all small schools. Sagatuck isn't going to be part of this because they don't have any trouble with their funding down in Sagatuck. They've always, they were one of those schools getting $10,000 when the rest of us were getting four. So it's not necessarily just that way. A lot of mid Michigan, northern Michigan, but on this side of the state, I could see someone like a Fenville being involved, but I don't have the list, Anna.
Okay. This isn't on like their website.
I didn't see it. No, I could email Brian, you know, if we wanted to consider this, I could certainly have that information before a vote. I just wanted to see if there's any general interest, but.
What, remind us of the cost of the MASP membership.
About $5,400 is the sum by rate capital.
Fifty-four, fifty-five. Fifty-five percent.
I think it's about, yeah, somewhere around $5,400 for the year. But theirs includes trainings and legal advice and things like that.
How many, how many people do they have in Lansing? I mean, is it one person, is it 10 people?
There's primarily the one lobbyist. Brian Keim is their lobbyist right now, yeah.
I still really struggle with the idea of using public funds to pay lobbyists to lobby the government. It seems odd to me that we would collect tax dollars and then use those tax dollars to pay a lobbyist to lobby for, you know, potentially increases in taxes so there's more revenue and it just becomes this cycle. So I struggle with that. That was one of the reasons that I voted no to renew our membership with MASP. I did review the website and I did like what I, what I did see, it is limited, but like the focus on K through 12. So, but that's kind of my, my position, but.
Yeah, the other thing I would say is that the big concern is, you know, we don't exist without our funding. And without the lobbyists, the people making the funding decisions are clueless about how school works. That's the problem. Most of our legislators have no idea how education works, how education funding works. And that's the need for the lobbyists is just to say, hey, you know, the people who are in the House and Senate right now, were not there in 1994 when Proposal A passed and then our funding formula completely changed. And so the role of the lobbyist is to say, hey, 30 years ago, the people of Michigan said, we want to, we want our, we want a school aid fund for school aid dollars to go to pre-K to 12 schools and you're not following what that formula says. So that's where the lobbyists kind of come in because again, a lot of folks making those financial decisions have no training how school works.
Yep. Yeah, and I understand that. So I don't necessarily approve of a lot of the way that things are done in Lansing, but I understand that. It's just, I just struggle with it.
So is this something you'd like more information on? Do we want, I mean, there's no, I don't know if there's a rush. I don't know if it's, they do a newsletter. I don't know how informative it is. It certainly isn't going to be again, as much information as like MASP sent out, but again, because of the conversation we're having later, it kind of felt like it fit with, with that.
Well, my, my, my question would be, you know, if, it'd be nice to know if they, if he's got, if this one person that does all the lobbying has a foothold in our community and our legislatures, if he doesn't have a relationship with them, are we, I mean, I understand he's doing it, but can, how is he going to educate our representation? Yeah, exactly. That's kind of, probably that's a good way to put it, you know, with the legislatures that represent us. You know, is he going to have a relationship with Representative Mirman to say, hey, you're thinking of this wrong?
Yeah.
You know, I guess that, that would be my concern.
Well, the problem is I don't think our legislators, even our MASP doesn't consider our, us at all now. So I don't think it matters if it's this guy or the guy. MASP is not considering Ottawa County ever. So it doesn't matter who it is. So they're thinking of the east side of the state. They're not thinking of the west side of the state at all. So that's my opinion.
Well, I can, Brian does live further up north and he, he did offer, you know, to come into a board meeting or to zoom into a board meeting. So if you have those questions, you want to ask him directly or if you're simply looking to see, I can try first of all, get a list of schools in the area and send that out in the weekly update so you can see that once I get that.
I definitely would like a list of schools and I mean, if we can wait to, to a working meeting and I would like, I mean, I wouldn't mind zooming in or if he could, you know, come and field some questions because that, those are just some of my concerns.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be glad to get that for you. Again, most of the schools in Ottawa County are on the bigger end of what they represent. I know there's again, I think North Muskegon's part of the School Equity Caucus, they're a little smaller. But yeah, like you said, I only shared this because it's an advocacy group out there and I thought, okay, let me share with the board to see. So I'll see who's on the list and then we'll see if we want to go a further step with that after that.
Yeah. Well, and with school funding being as chaotic as it is and nobody following the rules, lobbyist does make sense, but yeah.
So on that note, the next thing I should tell you is that if you watch Fox 17 News tonight, you're going to see me on the news. I was approached to have a conversation about the school funding issue. Luke Mirman and I debated each other. No, we didn't. We didn't, there was no debate. They actually interviewed Representative Mirman and then they came over here and asked to represent me. I think the young man at Fox 17 who has the Coopersville, Allendale, Spring Lake territory is a real gung ho guy and wanted to do a piece on that. But basically, you know, we talked about the fact that the concern, and some of you got the letter that I sent out to our parents, you know, for the new year and just said, hey, we're, you know, we are concerned that we by law had our budget done by June 30th. The state by law did not. You know, some of it is, it's a funding issue and uncertainty for the district, but it's also uncertainty for our families because, you know, all of our kids have been eligible for free and reduced breakfast and lunch, or excuse me, free breakfast and lunch for the last two years and they're still eligible through September 30th because that's how the state's fiscal year runs. But come October 1st, most of our parents who, they don't know if their kid's going to be eligible or not. So do they start budgeting to pay for hot lunch for their kid? Do they start figuring out how to do sack lunches again? It's just, it's uncertainty for our families as well. And in some districts, you know, they're struggling. We've, again, this board has done a great job with our finances, so we can cover some short-term costs, but some districts, they're making real hard staffing decisions and they're increasing class sizes and they're cutting bus runs and, you know, it's impacting families. And so it isn't just making it harder for us to run school, it's also harder for our families. And, you know, one of the things I tried to explain to them too is that, you know, when, for us, we're in kind of a tough spot where our bond didn't pass and we don't know what we're getting from the state, but then we have something come up like, you know, our roofs are leaking. Okay, well, we go and we fix them. And then a couple of months later, they might leak again. And so we go and we fix them. Well, if that happened at your house, eventually you'd want to replace that, right? You know that certain things wear out over time. Your roof wears out over time. Your refrigerator wears out over time. But with all the budget uncertainty, it's, we just keep putting patches on some things that it would be nice that if we at least had our budget for the year, even without the bond, it would make it easier for us to say, okay, we can't do everything, but we can do these things, like you did with the boilers and you did with the hot water heater. And so that's where the budget uncertainty really hurts and hopefully, hopefully this, you know, will get the legislature moving a little bit. And again, I understand what the Republican House was trying to do and I, as I've told Luke Mirman and I said in the interview, if they've got a better way to fund schools, I'm all in. I'm not saying this is the best formula ever. My concern is that instead of them presenting their budget in February and March and talking it through, they dropped it in the middle of June and then everybody left for the summer. That's my frustration. So hopefully now that it's not summer anymore, we'll get some movement on this. And then the other thing I want to clear up, if anybody who sees the video or reads the article, the one thing that Zach didn't understand, because he was asking me about the free lunches, and so I showed him our numbers and I explained to him, here's, and Jody Brower, our food service director is phenomenal, and she had a great spreadsheet for me. And it showed the kids who would be free, reduced, and then the rest of the kids who were getting the free lunch. And I explained to him that if October 1st comes and it's not in the budget anymore for free lunch for everybody, these kids will still get it because they're eligible no matter what. Well, he put that those 30% were going to lose it. The 30% is going to keep it. It's the 70% of the kids who will lose the free breakfast and lunch. So I did email him and hopefully he'll correct it on the website, but, so 70% of those kids who've been taking free breakfast and lunch will be impacted if they don't renew that budget. So that, that's what I was trying to, hoping he could convey.
Is that where, the question I had on that one, because we have all that surplus of that money from what we've been doing over the last, is that?
We all led to that conclusion. I love that. That was the first thought that went through my head. We're on the same brain.
We're on the same brain.
The problem is, we can't.
Oh.
I know, I was disappointed too. Now, what we could do is we could supplement any of the free and reduced students. So it's kind of a combination of the money we get from the federal government along with the state money. And so if there, if we wanted to say it's free for all free and reduced kids, we could absorb some of those costs, but those are the only students that would be eligible for it. That's a great question though. It's the first thing, well, I'm not just saying, it's great. Yeah, that was good thinking. I wish we could, but we can't on that. So anyways, that's on Fox 17. And then the other thing I do want to just mention real quickly, Lori Dyke, our new transportation director, is doing a fantastic job. She's out there recruiting, she's doing the best she can, getting drivers, getting aides. And honestly, unlike many districts in our area, we are fully staffed on drivers, but we are like just fully staffed. And so we have all of our runs staffed, but all of our buses are full. And so you might hear from people, man, my kid came home and the bus is super crowded. And it's like, it is, but we couldn't add a run if we wanted to because we just can't get the drivers. And so that's one of our problems. The other thing is, and I'm just going to throw out there as a reminder, we are, some of you were here when we had this conversation before, we are the only district in Ottawa County that does not have a walk zone. We bus 100% of our kids, even the ones in the neighborhood that has a huge sign, so close your kids could walk to school, we bus those kids. And if we didn't, if we had a walk zone, there would be about two less bus routes and we could spread these kids out on the buses. So there are things we could do, but last time we tried it, it didn't go over real well. So I don't know that we want to go there yet.
It's been how, it's been three years?
Oh, it was.
Tried it again?
I think it was before COVID, wasn't it?
I think it was.
It was after COVID because I was out here.
Okay. Because I was literally driving my son and I saw these people waiting for the bus and I'm thinking, if you turn and walk 15 steps, you'd be at the school by now.
I see kids standing out there for 10 minutes waiting for a bus that they're going to have to ride for 15 or 20 minutes and I know they could be at the school sooner than.
I mean, it's literally the road on the same side of the school. I'm like, you're all in high school.
But we, yeah.
Walk those 15s. I was literally.
We are the only district.
For what it's worth, I think it's worth revisiting.
What's that? I'm sorry.
I said, for what it's worth, I think it's worth revisiting.
Okay. I will work with Lori and.
I guess I wasn't around for that, but I'm literally like.
I, I think it.
Take your feet and move.
I think it's worth having, you know, maybe a little data from other schools, like how far their, their walk zone is.
Half a mile, it's all a half mile radius. Actually, one district's like a full mile, might be Coopersville, I think. One of them's a full mile radius, but most of them it's a half mile radius. And one of the things is, when we did it last time, we did a half mile radius and that goes out over 68th. And we tried not to make kids, like especially middle school kids who are just on the other side of the high school, because they had some busy roads. So I think we need to, I, I think just saying, well, here's the circle and you can't be in it, I think we should be a little more intentional about.
Can we do like, can we do the aid, like, like middle school and higher? I mean.
Yeah, because it's really the elementary runs where it's the worst and it's really crowded. I mean, we, you know, by the time they're juniors in high school, nobody wants to ride the bus, so.
Literally this morning, I saw all these people, like, I'm like, you're like 16. Take the little steps and walk.
Well, and the other thing I'll just remind you too, is that we are one of the very few districts that have aides on a lot of our buses, which is great, but an aide takes up a seat, that's two less kids. And in the case of little kids, that's three less kids on the bus. So it's a nice perk to have, but then it makes your bus even more crowded because you've got this extra adult riding on the bus. So it's a lot of pieces in play there, but again, I, kudos to Lori and her staff for doing the best they could to get everybody on the bus who wanted to be on the bus. But if you hear, wow, those buses are crowded, they are. And our biggest dilemma right now is nobody's rushing over to say, I'll drive a bus.
Is there a way for, sorry, my voice is Friday. Is there a way for Lori to kind of give us a few options to consider maybe at a work session of like walk routes of maybe a radius versus more detailed, strategic, you know, what it would look like and the cost impact and how many families and stuff?
I'll try to work with her on that. Again, Lori's brand spanking new to that job, so.
Well, that, and it's a first of the school year, I get that, so no rush, but.
Yeah. And again, this is probably not a change we want to make this school year, right? Again, it's like with the food service, I hate changing things on people mid-year, but certainly something to think about for down the road because again, it does make a difference and it's only getting harder to get bus drivers. So just wanted to throw that out there. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Board comments. Brandon, we'll start with you.
No comments other than great job with the presentation. Yeah, that was really good stuff. That's it.
Thank you.
Nothing other than I heard nothing but positive that it was a great first day. So congrats everybody for that. That's it.
Thank you. Anna? Tanya?
Great presentation, first of all. And my son started his first day back at Allendale and I heard, queer text him, it was great. We'll start school tomorrow, so we'll see how that goes. But there we go.
Thank you. Pam?
Great start to the year and I just hope that that continues throughout the course of the year. And I appreciate everyone who's involved from, you know, teachers, staff, aides, volunteers. It's a tremendous group of people and that's what makes this district wonderful. So I appreciate them and I appreciate your, your comments and your presentations. So thank you.
Thank you, Pam. All right, president's comments. First, I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about. Creating a ad hoc committee for liability insurance provider, because we are not part of M A S B. So, it's like, so they would, they would cover us for an additional year, because they were tied to M A S B. So, I was looking at creating a committee to look into that liability. And obviously, Dr. Cooper, I think I would ask that you be on it, Gary, and then.
Probably Scott.
Gary, oh, Scott, I was one of the, I'm sorry. Yep, and then two board members that we can.
I would like to do that.
You would like to? Okay.
I'd like to do it also.
Okay, perfect.
You need to have, for an ad hoc committee, you need to have a chair. So, Pam or Brandon?
Brandon, would you be willing?
I would be willing to be chair, yes.
Awesome, thank you very much. And then superintendent evaluation, as I believe it's state law, I had a conversation with someone today, but with three years of very effective on, on Dr. Cooper's evaluation, he is eligible to skip a year. That would have to be a board vote to do that. And it was, it was, it was a discussion that we had had and I was just curious what everybody's thoughts were, or if we would like to continue on as normal as doing an evaluation every year.
I think it's a great accountability tool, just to keep it going.
I've never had the opportunity to do one, so might be good experience.
Thank you.
I think that the evaluations have been, in, you know, dating back to when you started. I came on with, prior to that, but it's been very consistent. There's been very few, very few instances, I mean, basically, the, the overall grade is, is always the same. I don't have a problem with skipping a year. And has everyone been trained?
We would have to get the new members trained by, but it's November, so I think we have time. And Amy is looking into that.
And who, who does the training now?
It's still, so there's only two rubrics for doing the superintendent evaluation, M A S Bs, so we, and there's another one which, by heart, is very bad. So, we can still use M A S Bs' tool and their training. So, so that, that is not an issue.
Well, just for some context too, the law changed last year and when it changed, teachers are now eligible to be evaluated once every three years and administrators are eligible to be evaluated once every two years. You have to have scored either highly effective, which it used to be highly effective was the top score, or now it's effective is the highest score. And so, that's what kind of precipitated this conversation, is that now that we're on this cycle where every other employee in the district is either every other year or every three years, we had an opportunity to have this conversation as well. I will say that I asked around in Ottawa County and some other surrounding superintendents, and I would say it's probably, certainly less than half of the superintendents who do every other year, the rest are every year. One of the, it's kind of hard to know exactly, because you have to, first of all, have been a superintendent for three years to even be eligible. So, you have to have been a superintendent for three years and you have to have gotten the highest score for all three years. And so, there's three superintendents in Ottawa County, at least three who don't qualify, because they haven't been there long enough. So, that's, that's part of it too, but I would say that for less than half of them. But I will also say that several of them who said mine's been annual, but we are having that conversation. So, probably just like us, because the law changed, the conversation came up, so.
Does that have to be in November?
It used to be in June, but it, the, the problem is, our performance data comes out in the fall. So, when you do the evaluation in June, first of all, in June, you're dealing with budget stuff, so there's so much going on in June, it just became very cumbersome. But you were referencing back to data that's over a year old and, like by the time you did my evaluation in June, kids had already taken the M step again, but you're using data from the time they took it before. So, the data's fresher now than it was when, when it was in June. We do it in November, we've done it in December a couple of times, so, but, yeah.
So, is the question to just skip this year and continue annual? Or skip this year and then we would start the sort of bi-annual reviews?
It would, I think we would have to go by, we would have to vote.
Every year.
Oh, we'd have to do that every year?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Yep, if you skipped this year, you would have to do it next year and then, then next year you'd have to decide again if you wanted to skip. Yep, it's not automatic.
I would, I would like to, I just, yeah, I would like to.
And then all else, I got to, I want to say, I'm excited for a new school year. I believe I'll pass it, go by. And excited to thank all the teachers, administration, support staff, for their hard work. The atmosphere that the kids want to come to, the kids are excited, which is awesome to hear, so. Let, can I have a motion to adjourn at 7:18?
Motion to adjourn at 7:18.
Let's go in, vote for this item, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
I'll hold the same, hold the pass.